Good evening. Welcome to this Zoom webinar forum with the candidates for Kitsap County Commissioner. Tonight's event is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Kitsap, the Kitsap Regional Library, and BCAT, Bremerton Kitsap Access Television. My name is Janet Stegmeier, and I will be the moderator for this forum. Originally, we planned to have candidates for both districts one and two, but Commissioner Charlotte Grito is unable to attend tonight due to an unexpected death in the family, and we send her our condolences. Out of respect for Commissioner Grito's situation, Orin Root has agreed not to appear tonight. Mr. Root sends his sincere condolences to the Grito family. The League of Women Voters is proud to be a nonpartisan organization, neither supporting nor opposing candidates and political parties. The League envisions a democracy where every person has the desire, the right, the knowledge, and the confidence to participate. The League is celebrating its 100th anniversary this year, and we'd like to invite any of you age 16 or older, all genders, to join our organization and help support our mission of empowering voters and defending democracy. Basic membership is $60 per year, and student membership is free. Non-voting associate memberships are available for non-citizens and those younger than 16. When you registered for this webinar, you were invited to send in questions. We've consolidated those, plus others the public has contributed into the questions I'll ask of tonight's candidates. The questions will cover a range of topics and issues pertinent to Kitsap County. Candidates for Kitsap County Commissioner, District One, are Robert Gelder and Scott Hindon. Thanks to both of you for stepping up to offer your skills and talents in service of our county. You deserve our respect. We also ask that during this forum, you maintain civility with one another. Candidates, during tonight's format, each of you will be given 90 seconds to make an opening statement. We will go in the order your names appear on the ballot. Then I will begin the questions. Each of you, in a rotating order, will have 60 seconds to respond. If you have answered a question and have time remaining, you may speak about a previous question or clarify a statement. At the end of the forum, each candidate will have a minute and a half to make a closing statement. If you run out of time, you may finish your sentence. Our timekeeper will maintain the countdown electronic clock. And now for the opening statements, a minute and a half. We'll start with Mr. Gelder.
Well, good evening, and thank you for everyone attending this virtual forum tonight, and thank you so much to the League of Women Voters for hosting. As my name is Rob Gelder, and I have the honor to serve as your county commissioner. I first became involved in the county in 2008 as a volunteer on the Budget Committee. Along with my years of experience in local government, I also bring 20 years of experience in health and human services. Together, I spent two decades in senior management executive leadership. As commissioner, it's important to be involved in our community side by side with our neighbors, make a difference. And that's why I'm an active member of the Paulsborough Rotary Club. Some of my priorities over the next four years include continuing to simplify permitting and land use through the use of technology and process improvement, updating zoning use tables to support a changing small business environment, and targeting our 1406 monies to support the creation of affordable housing, and stewarding resources for transportation corridor improvements and trail development. Now, leadership is not just about identifying problems, but about finding solutions and developing partnerships. And leadership is not about driving your own agenda, but about removing barriers so that communities can realize their own. Now, while the political process is the means by which the community gets to determine who holds this position, the role of county commissioner should be about service, in service to our community, in partnership with you, and I ask for your vote to continue as your county commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hindon, 90 seconds.
Good evening. I'm Scott Hindon, running for Kitsap County Commissioner. Now, if I get anything in my hair, I need somebody to brush their head or something here tonight and kind of give me a little warning. So, but thank you to the League of Women Voters for your hard work and this opportunity. I've lived in Kitsap County for 57 years, owned a small business, Handan Electric, for 35 years for adult children, and they were raised in this county. The community sport, I've been on the North Kitsap School Board, been a member of the Habitat for Humanity on the board and as a volunteer, worked with Coffee Oasis as a volunteer and supporter, and been a coach here and there with the kids. What causes me to run for Kitsap County Commissioner is I think that we've stalled for nine years. You look at what has happened with affordability. Last year, nine years, housing prices are up 90%, rents up 80%, wages are up 30%. I just don't think that's fair to the working family and doesn't give them a chance. I think we have a budget shortfall coming, and I will support no added taxes. We need to move the commissioner's wages to match the cut in the budget. I think it's only fair, and we need to prioritize deputies in the court and not just make flat cuts. I will support business and jobs by reducing delays in regulation and permit and times. Long-term problems like the Kingston ferry backup, the Navy Yard traffic, boat launch at Hansville, the Ride Park in Port Gamble have all been stalled.
Okay, I think we're out of time, Mr. Hindon.
Okay, I didn't see a time come up there. Okay, sorry.
Yeah, we're right out of time. All right, so we're going to start with the questions, and each of the questions you'll have 60 seconds to respond. So, question one is about your reasons for running. So, this is something, Mr. Hindon, that might fit in with what you were finishing up with. So, what are two or three things that influenced you to run for office as a county commissioner? And what experience do you have that qualifies for you for this, excuse me, qualifies you for this position? And we'll start with Mr. Hindon, 60 seconds.
Well, I have a successful small business, and I'm taking leave from that because I think it's time that we move on some of the issues that I stated earlier. Roads, affordability is a huge one. Coming along with that is homelessness. We need to promote jobs in the county. We've had a boat launch in Hansville that has been stalled all nine years. A lot of that work is done. We have a ride park where the property's been bought five years ago. We have anxious volunteers ready to go. You know, if I'm honest, I may not be the most qualified candidate, and that would be true. There's probably 1,000 people in this county that have some kind of military background or something that would say it's more qualified, but I don't think it's just about that. It's about what direction are we heading? And my qualifications are earned the hard way. I've been in business. I've made the decisions. I've kept it going.
Thank you. Mr. Gelder.
Thank you. I've been asked this question before, and I think that my short answer is that I blame it on my dad. My dad was in public service for 21 years on our school board and our town council where I grew up. But honestly, I've been in your county commissioner for nine years, and I think that's where Mr. Hindon gets the nine-year reference. But that nine years has been about gaining experience and understanding about all of the intricacies of the operations of all the various departments and that of the separate elected. And that knowledge is really what it takes to be able to gain that skill and leadership and basis to be able to make good, good decisions based in fact and that history so that you can actually make a strong position going forward. So, is there, are we perfect? No, by any means. And that's why I've inserted myself into other positions dealing with the Growth Management Act, trying to find solutions so that we can continue to move our community forward.
Thank you. The second question has to do with priorities. What do you see as Kitsap County's highest priorities for the next few years? And how would you address these as a county commissioner? And we'll start with Mr. Gelder.
Thank you. You know, one of the biggest unknowns will be the fallout, ultimate fallout of COVID. We know that we have a $10 million projected budget deficit just for 2021, so we are having to figure out how to provide or maintain a level of service to the community with less dollars. We also don't know what, how long that depression or that recession will actually last. And that's our biggest fear or concern, is being able to be adaptable to that. But it's also being able to be in a position so that we can support our community and have the tools in place to be able to deal with any surges or hotspots and be able to react in a very nimble way. Beyond that, it's really trying to work with the state in trying to identify and make sure that we can secure adequate transportation funding and secure, maintain what we already have dedicated for Kingston, for Highway 305, et cetera.
Thank you. Mr. Hindon.
Well, priorities, there's a lot to say in a minute, but I think as far as the budget goes, we have to make the people's safety, deputies, and an active court system the number one thing in the budget. That may be hard at times, but that would be my priority. Beyond that, we're in a housing crisis where you have homelessness. We have people that can't afford it. We're 70% over what HUD says should be on the average housing, and at some point, we're going to have to make some choices other than talking about it. We just did a county study after nine years. Really? Give me two builders and a couple realtors and a developer. We can tell you what the problems are with affordability in the county. So affordability is huge. The things like the Ride Park in Port Gamble. It's been two years in permitting. This is something fairly simple. If we can't solve something simple with the community, how are we going to do it? And if we're going to talk about partners, we have partners there that are ready and anxious to go, and we've held them back.
Thank you. Okay, the third question, this is opening up a big can of worms here, is the budget. The county budget shortfall is predicted through 2025, in part due to COVID-19. 2020's projections show about a $2 million deficit. A 5% budget reduction in every county department has been mandated for next year's budget. How would you address these budget shortfalls? For instance, should the shortfalls be resolved with revenue increases or budget cuts? And we'll start with Mr. Hindon.
Well, we're certainly going to have to make budget cuts. There's no question about that. And I've stated several times, I'm not in favor of automatically saying we're going to cut everybody's budget the same. We can love some things like the parks, and we do, but if I had to choose, I want to make sure that we have public safety, that the deputies are there, that our courts are there handling our systems as they should. A lot of these things are prioritized. You have grants come into the budget, different things where it may not be so simple as just pulling numbers out. And I understand that from my time on the school board, that there's designated funds, but we still have to have priorities there. And mine are going to clearly fall with the deputies. Beyond that, I think the commissioners should cut their own wages to match the budget cut. Feel the pain of the people would go a long ways, I think, towards gaining their trust that they truly understand what is going on in the economy.
Thank you. Mr. Gelder.
So, and actually, the cut for 2020 was 5%. And if you extrapolate that out to a full year for 2021, it ends up being 10%. And when you look at the overall budget, we're really talking about the general fund budget. That's not all the others, that three-quarters of the overall county budget, about $400 million, is, are all restricted funds. We're really talking about the general fund, where 75% of that is law and justice. That is a priority in the overall budget. The remaining 25% is what covers all the rest of general government. And in, along with Commissioner Grito, back in 2012, we did donate back salaries, and I'm totally willing to do that again. I've already had that conversation with Commissioner Wolf as well because I agree. We are all in this together. This is about a one-county unit, one-county organization, trying to be as viable and vital as possible to provide the level of service to the community.
Thank you. All right, the fourth question has to, is part of the budget, but it focuses on a mental health budget. What are your thoughts on how county mental health funding has been allocated? How would you manage the county budget to provide for the increasing need for mental health services due to COVID-19 impacts? And we'll begin with Mr. Gelder.
So, that is a question that requires more than one minute. When it comes to the 1/10th of 1% for the investments in mental health, I think we've done a really good job. We have a citizen advisory committee that's made really good targeted investments to make sure that we are addressing the entire continuum so that we can ultimately reduce those folks that are actually receiving service or in need of services. Allocating more, we, we just experienced a really big blow when it came to January 2020, when the state went to fully integrated care. That removed about $60 million out of the three-county area of Kitsap, Jefferson, and Clallum that was being delivered directly to providers to provide care in the community. And so now, all we are is providing the crisis care. And unfortunately, with managed care organizations in the mix, they are taking the profit and leaving very little to provide services to the community.
Thank you. Mr. Hindon.
Well, I recently talked to one of the board members of the mental health, and actually, he gave it high ratings for being efficient, for hitting their targets, for moving ahead in that. And I think that's terrific. He has, there's your clawback provisions where if they don't meet their goals, that they have to repay their dollars, and I think that's great. You know, you look at something like homelessness, and it's a very complicated issue, but a piece of that is mental health. I'm somewhat aware of Coffee Oasis and the working with kids. You know, it's just awful hard to make a judgment on people until you actually see their, what they're going through, what they've been through, and the help that they need. And I've had some opportunity to do that, and I'm grateful for that. But we do have obligation to take care of our community members.
Thank you. The fifth question has to do with law enforcement. Does Kitsap County have adequate law enforcement? What needs to be changed, added, or eliminated considering the county budgetary concerns? And we'll start with Mr. Hindon.
Well, it's interesting. I've made several statements on that already, but I'll go over that again. I think if a government has a responsibility, a government does have a responsibility. And the number one is to make sure that citizens are safe, that if they call 911, that there's a deputy in a reasonable amount of time if there's an incident or whatever, that deputies, if they go out on a call, are not shorthanded and asked to step into situations where they should have backup and don't have them. And that's why I support looking at saying, okay, if I had to do one thing in the budget, it would be support the deputies. And the other piece of that is, you know, our courts have to remain active. Justice delayed is not justice. I mean, at some point, we have to keep up with our ongoing cases that on all sides, justice is met.
Thank you. Mr. Gelder.
So, I actually come from a family of law enforcement. My father and my brother were sheriff's deputies. Do we have enough? No, we don't. We don't have enough coverage around our community and our county. The difficulty is figuring out, when you're looking at the law enforcement system, it's really about balance because it's all integrated. It's an integrated system between what law enforcement does and what the courts do. And so you can't necessarily, you know, pull so easily from one to the other. I think what we really have, unfortunately, is a structural flaw in sort of how counties are funded. When we have just really two main resources, in terms of property tax and sales tax, that do not keep up with the growth of inflation or the cost of living. And you put those two together, and you are always going to be behind the curve of rising costs, and you're never going to keep up. So, this has been a conversation. I've been leading on the state level for a number of years.
Thank you. Our sixth question is about the CARES Act. Through the Coronavirus Relief Fund, the CARES Act provides for payments to state, local, and tribal governments navigating the impact of the COVID-19 outbreak. How are these funds being used in Kitsap County? Is the amount received meeting the county's needs during the pandemic? And we'll start with Mr. Gelder.
So, I actually think that the, the amount of funding that we've received has been adequate for the amount of time that we have to use it in. But therein lies the issue, that when the federal government took action on the CARES Act, they placed an expenditure deadline of December 31st of this year. They distributed some cities and counties that were large enough, got a direct appropriation. Those who didn't, it came through the state. And we're lucky. Not all states have actually shared any of the funding with their counties or cities. We have. The biggest problem, though, is that we have to have it spent by the end of November in order to just wrap everything up by the end of December. So, we're pushing and trying to advocate with our federal delegation to support, if no more money, at least an extension of the deadline to the end of their budget year because we need a little bit more time because we know this doesn't go away at the end of November. But we, I think we've been making some targeted investments so that we're able to respond and support the community.
Thank you. Mr. Hindon.
Well, I can't say I know a whole lot about the CARES Act. I know on a national level, we're spending more money than we have, and we can't continue to do that forever. Somebody's going to have to pay that back, and I'm afraid it's going to be my kids. But I think the county needs to continue to keep up the work. I just met a customer the other day that's waiting on the Health Department. They've been waiting for a month to get into their house, a simple change. I think that we need to make sure that the county is functioning. We're going to require permits of people. I think that they need to be implemented in a timely way or relief. It's, we can't keep putting people off and blaming it on Corona, blaming it on smoke or whatever. Either we can do the dot job and we take the money for it, or we need to tell the people, we're not going to take the money from you.
Thank you. Well, our, our next question ties in to what you were just speaking about, and it's about the Health Department and COVID-19. County commissioners are board members of the Kitsap County Health Department. What measures do you support to slow the spread of COVID-19? Please be specific in addressing school reopenings, facial coverings, and social gatherings, both large and small. And we'll start with Mr. Hindon.
Well, if I was on the school board today, I would be in favor of total reopening. We can use precautions such as face masks or shields around the teachers. It's largely shown that kids under 20 are almost unaffected by this or very minor. I think I've worked as a skilled care center where it is extremely important that we use high measures of safety, temperature checks, and all of those things are appropriate. I do think that the COVID Act has gone too far. I think it's hurt too many people. I think it's hurt kids. We're going to lose a third of our, our businesses, the hypocrisy in some of it. You know, you can go to Home Depot, but you can't go golf with your buddy. Bar's got to close at 10:00. I'm really opposed to a lot of that kind of overaction and unfairness, really, to so many people.
Thank you. Mr. Gelder.
So, I think the, the Health District has done an admirable job. I think that when we plan for disasters in our joint command and our emergency operations center, we're really talking about natural disasters. A pandemic and dealing with sort of a health crisis is very different, and they've risen to the challenge. I think that the facial coverings, a lot of these requirements have not come from the local Health District. They've actually come from the governor and from the State Department of Health. But I am supportive of facial coverings because it's actually been demonstrated to show that it reduces the spread and keeps people safer. And the same thing with the social gatherings. It's just, it's a numbers game, right? The more you have, don't have the protections in place, and you bring more people together, like schools, that is where you ultimately get the greatest community spread. And that's where we will totally lose ground, and it will become much worse.
Thank you. We're going to shift a bit, a new topic area, on population growth and climate change. And to give background to everyone attending, the Washington State Growth Management Act is a Washington state law adopted in 1990 that requires state and local governments to manage Washington's growth by identifying and protecting critical areas and natural resource lands, designating, designating urban growth areas, preparing comprehensive plans, and implementing them through capital investments and development regulations. The GMA was adopted because the Washington State Legislature found that uncoordinated and unplanned growth posed a threat to the environment, sustainable economic development, and the quality of life in Washington. Rather than centralized planning and decision-making at the state level, the GMA focuses on local control. So, question eight is on population growth. Significant population growth is predicted for Kitsap County over the next few years. What do you think needs to be done now to address this growth in Kitsap County? Please be specific as to housing demand, increased traffic, transportation, infrastructure, infrastructure changes, zoning, et cetera. And we'll begin with Mr. Gelder.
Well, thank you. I think, you know, one of the, there's a lot of good things about the Growth Management Act in terms of trying to preserve the character of our communities. But after 25 some odd years, it has not kept up with the times. And I think that's a challenge and one of the reasons why I volunteered to be one of five county commissioners across the state, be part of a work group to sort of look at how can we make the Growth Management Act better. I, you talk about local control, and it's there, but only to a certain degree. There is really not a lot of deference to local control in the system. But the good thing, though, is when you talk about housing, transportation, and zoning, that's why you do a comprehensive plan update and why each year we do a capital facilities plan so that we look out for the, in the, in terms of our update, we're looking out 20 years. But we do a rolling six-year planning so that we are planning for the amount of infrastructure, roads, or sewers, et cetera, that we would need in the years to come.
Thank you. Mr. Hindon.
Yeah, let's keep in mind that we've had zoning for 50 years at the local level. Commissioners made those decisions. They were accountable to the people. The state people voted down GMA before the legislature passed that, which is unfortunate. Yeah, I'd agree with Commissioner Gelder on this. I think local control is largely demented by the state, and it needs dramatic changes. Just talking about it or having some meetings, it's not going to do it. We really need to advocate with our legislators so that they know, this is a crisis. It really is. We're currently building one-third of the new houses that we need in Kitsap County to keep up with growth. We all know what's going to happen is prices have increased, and we've, we've seen that happen. So, one of the things that growth management is supposed to do too, one of the points, is affordability, and it's totally failed at that. So, I'm really, I think growth management is probably the number one killer of affordability in the county and state.
Thank you. The next question has to do with Kitsap Transit. How can Kitsap Transit best meet the transportation needs of residents with the predicted population growth of the county? And we'll start with Mr. Hindon.
Yeah, well, you know, I love parts of things Kitsap Transit does. The worker rider programs, we have somebody load up a bus. They drive to work. It gets traffic off of the road, and that's a terrific thing. The ferries run. You see high numbers of people on it. I see awful lot of buses running around, and at one point, Kitsap Transit, for every mile they drove, they had one passenger. So, I think that it should be more efficient, and if it can't be more efficient, it should stop taking the money from the people. Running around empty buses that aren't scheduled is just not efficient. Building the things that work, I support totally. Those things that work, actually move people and get them off the road. But other than that, I question some of the monies that they spent and continue to see empty buses.
Thank you. Mr. Gelder.
Yeah, I think there's any number of reasons why one might see an empty bus, and that could be just that it's deadheading because of the route and the time schedule. But I think transit, there's, there's a lot of tools that come into play, and I think that, like Mr. Hindon acknowledged, that there's, there are some routes that don't necessarily perform because the, how the, you know, living patterns, residential patterns have changed. So, that's one of the reasons why Transit just completed a little while ago, sort of a comprehensive route analysis. So, you don't just keep a route where it is because it's always been there. You want to go where the people are, where you're going to have users. And a couple of, along with the worker driver, we also have defining a bus rapid transit corridor basically along Highway 303 so that you have, the thing that really drives ridership, you want to make sure that it's convenient and that you have frequency. Without frequency, people are going to make other choices about how to get to work or to the store. They're going to jump into a car.
Thank you. The next question is on climate change. What are ways Kitsap County can fight climate change and its effects? As Kitsap County develops, more and more traffic on the highways means As Kitsap County develops, more and more traffic on the highways means increased air pollution emissions. Would you consider zoning changes or other actions that would encourage commercial building along high-traffic roads and discourage housing in that area? Mr. Gelder?
I mean, when you think about it right now, that's sort of what the focus is. You don't want to create, well, actually, I take that back. I mean, when you think about a lot of the activity that's happening on the state level, they want to have this co-mingled type of housing along with commercial on the high-traffic corridors because then you're getting people moved much more quickly, and you're having that housing connected much more directly to the transportation. How it affects, you know, climate change, I guess it would really depend on how we are measuring it. I think one of the concerns I have is that there are new requirements under the Growth Management Act. Climate change is on the horizon, but until we define it and define the metrics, then it becomes really this unfunded mandate for the local jurisdictions to actually have to figure out how to do.
Thank you. Mr. Hinden?
Mr. Gelder, I appreciate you acknowledging that. You know, I'm kind of excited, though, about the technology that we're seeing come out. I'm an electrician. In the last 10 years, LEDs have done a tremendous job of reducing the amount of energy they talk, well, probably about a third. And we start looking at electric cars are coming along. In my life, maybe we'll see self-driving cars, a lot of things that are going to help us. It worries me when government decides that it's going to manage too much, and that's prior to the problem of the previous question. Government has a role to protect us from each other, but at the same time, if it gets too involved, what it does is kills innovation, and it kills buildings, and we start telling people where they should work, where they should live. Are we really free? So I'm in favor of business being able to have broad choices on where it chooses to place buildings or work or what works for them, and I think they're going to do that smart anyway.
Thank you. The next question has to do with zoning and climate change. Is cutting down trees for roundabouts on the State Route 305 scenic byway adding to climate change? Does cutting down trees and pouring asphalt for an expanded Washington State ferry holding area rather than using a ferry reservation system increase the rate of climate change? Mr. Hinden?
Yes, I love roundabouts. You know, they're kind of the new innovation in this county. I'd say even last 20 years, the places that I've seen them go in, to a large degree, have removed the backups or at least limited them. I think that's good for the environment. It could argue that any tree you take down, any blade of grass you cut is a hurt on the environment. I think that we have to live here, too, and I support those innovations. And where we can put in a roundabout and it moves traffic and stuff, I'm in favor of that. The ferry holding lane in Kingston has been proposed for over 20 years, probably closer to 25. It's been stalled, ongoing. We have people that are parking alongside a major highway. I'm so glad that nobody's been hurt, but it does worry me. We need to finish that lane, the holding lanes going into Kingston, batch them down into Kingston. That will be an efficient way to go, and that's what I would support, getting it done.
Thank you. Mr. Gelder?
So there is obviously a nexus between the tree coverage and climate change. And so whenever you do remove a tree for a public works project, I think that's something that you want to keep in mind. But it's also, again, sort of about that balance. That, like Mr. Hinden mentioned, there's been a need, and we need to have our, that community, the functioning, work well. And so when it comes to the design or the implementation of those improvements that will help our transportation, that throughput, whether it's to the ferry or whether it's from Polesbo to Bainbridge Island, I think being mindful of that and just knowing that maybe the design doesn't have to start with a total raising of the trees, but how can you do a creative design that actually focuses on tree retention but still provides you that functional lift that you're looking for?
Thank you. The next question has to do with safe evacuations during forest fires and wildfires. And I know we've been horrified to see what's been happening, especially on the West Coast, and wonder if it could happen here. Much of Kitsap County is heavily wooded or brushy. Looking at the very north end of the county, for example, residents would depend on the Hansville Highway to evacuate in case of a major fire. How can the county encourage or require landowners along this critical escape route to clear back the area so it's safer during emergency evacuations? Mr. Gelder?
That's a great question, and I would have to admit, I don't necessarily have a specific answer for that. You know, when it gets down to, if you're talking about the, what is actually along the route, that might be able to be handled more specifically from the county's perspective in right of way. But when it comes to the, what is actually on someone's property, then, you know, you have to deal with personal property rights. And having some amount of oversight on kind of what, you know, what vegetation somebody may or may not have, I don't know if that would actually be legal. It would be something to explore potentially, but I think it would be a tough one to deal with.
Thank you. Mr. Hinden?
Yeah, I think part, a piece of what we're seeing nationwide is forest practices that aren't happening. My brother, when he was young, worked for Pope Resources, and they did burns when they'd log, and they'd get rid of a lot of that fuel that is underneath. And I know burning has its downside, but leaving that fuel does, too. I know the local fire departments on some level have encouraged people, get the brush back from your house, get some of that loose, dry stuff out as well, and I support them in that effort. The Hansville Highway is a problem. There is a bypass with consolidation with, or working with the tribe could be made. It's a dirt road, but in the case of emergency, it would go through tribal areas there, and I think that that would be a good thing to do. I know that Hansville, I just, this last week, talked to somebody that was concerned about one way in and one way out. If the tree goes down, if there's a major event, how do they get emergency vehicles out there? So maybe going through Aegon and cut across there is a limited means might be an answer.
Thank you. The next question has to do with the tiny house project. At the 2016 County Commissioner Summit on Homelessness, strategies were developed to end homelessness in Kitsap County. A multi-agency leadership group was formed to develop a tiny house village in each of the two districts. In 2017, 12 tiny houses were built for the villages with private donations. Now we're facing another winter, and these structures remain empty while a number of Kitsap County residents are homeless. The obstacles are reported to be, one, the county permitting process; two, the commissioners did not fund the project with a sustainable budget; and three, the county does not have agency partners under contract to operate the village. Please outline your plan, if elected, for establishing a tiny house village in your respective district that will provide temporary shelter for growing numbers of county residents who have no home. Mr. Hinden?
Well, I think tiny houses are a good temporary solution. I think that we should allow them. I think they need to be safe and sanitary. You know, if we can meet those goals in the broadest possible terms, I would support them. I would support ADUs for homeowners, much easier than it is now. I think there's impediments that make it harder to do ADU, so you could get some income and maybe help some people on the lower income scale. We've had empty school buildings. We've had empty commercial buildings. Bermington Rescue last year was shut down because they, their fire alarm system wasn't up to date. So it's okay to put people outside during the cold, but maybe their fire alarm, we couldn't do something, go down to Home Depot and buy 20 fire alarms and stick them on the wall. I mean, come on, people, it's people over rules. I think that we have to begin to be aggressive on this, along with affordability, or we're not going to gain anything. Government can't spend its way out of this problem.
Thank you. Mr. Gelder?
Thank you. So the tiny house project is, tiny houses are part of a continuum. They are one tool in the toolbox of being able to take people from homelessness to being rehoused. One of the challenges in his, the recent past, anyway, is that the county actually developed a transient accommodations code that would support this and would actually make it a lot easier. But most of the, it gets to the point where the issue is the land is a big part of it because we didn't, if the potential property is not within the unincorporated Kitsap area, then our code does not apply. So for a long time in Port Orchard, they were looking at properties that were actually within the city limit, so it was a very different process. And agency providers or partners are probably going to be different depending on what part of the county you're in. So it would be developing those relationships to actually have a nonprofit that would be the sponsor.
Thank you. The next question is about the major employers. How can the county strengthen their relationship with Kitsaps' major employers, including the Department of Defense, defense contractors, Amazon, manufacturing firms such as Safeboat, et cetera? Mr. Gelder?
Thank you. When it comes to working with the major employers in the county, that we actually support the Kitsap Economic Development Alliance, that is our economic development arm. We support them to the tune of $100,000 every year, and they, on our behalf, are really looking at that recruitment and retention function for the county. But beyond that, we do have specific relationships and working relationships with the Department of Defense. And one of the challenges with the Navy is every time, you know, about two, three years, you have someone new to work with, so you're really reliant upon the building relationships with the staff that are there, ongoing, and really kind of working it from that direction. But working with KITA and doing, inviting the folks to a roundtable, really understanding kind of what they need and what is not being provided, I think that's really helped us in the past to make improvements in our use tables and other zoning concerns.
Thank you. Mr. Hinden?
Well, I would change that question slightly to all employers. That we have a huge number of small businesses, and the large ones, certainly the federal government, we should have relationships where we can work together if it's traffic, if it's get parking, any of the others, if they need some. But I think that we need to approach all employers and say, how do we help you? Because what I've seen in my business, as the county comes in and somebody thinks they have a path forward and they get a permit, or maybe they even buy the property, and the county comes in and says, oh, yeah, we want you to put a water main through here. We want you to do this and that, which they don't tell before. So you have this business that has this tremendous capital outlay, and all of a sudden, the rules have changed on them. I think that we have to give pre-rules and variety and not decide that along the way we're going to change those and make them harder. But employment is a huge issue. My dad worked for civil service for 35 years, and we can be proud of those workers, but we have to support the private industry.
Thank you. And there we go to the next question, which is small businesses. How can the county assist small businesses as they struggle to survive or recover from COVID-19 closures and other adverse economic factors? Mr. Hinden?
Well, I think that the county can and should advocate with the governor. I remember back in June, we had one COVID case in the county, and we shut the county down from going to phase two because of one person. I think that hurt an awful lot of people, and we have to make some balanced decisions there. Like I've been saying, I've been in business 35 years. There's probably 100 stories that I've heard over the years about how the county hasn't kept its promises, has changed the rules on people, has had delays, had excessive costs. The fire department or marshal is part of that concern, that we're changing the rules as we go. Let's make the rules fair and consistent and timely, and I think that will go a long ways for it. But we really need somebody that cheerleads for these guys and gals that are looking to open business, and, you know, they're not going to get back in business unless they can open up.
Thank you. Mr. Gelder?
So one of the things that we've been doing with our CARES Act funding is try to provide that support to small businesses that are affected by the closure, such that, we've done four rounds now. The first three were a limit of $5,000 and some various criteria that folks had to meet and realized that we needed to be able to expand that a little bit more, increase that to $10,000, and it had a phenomenal response to it, such that just the other day, the board has actually put more money into the small business relief. And so I think that's part of it, is trying to make sure that we can help buoy our small businesses that are struggling with making their rent or paying for employees, et cetera. But beyond that, I think one of the ways that we can support small businesses, and we're actually undertaking that now, is an update of our use tables. Because the economy's changed, small businesses change, and so much of it's now happening from your own home, and we need to make sure that our zoning use tables are actually responsive and supportive of that.
Thank you. The next question has to do with equity and equality. As a commissioner, how would you work with staff, various departments, and the public to ensure that county actions and decisions promote equity, defined as being fair and impartial, rather than just equality, defined as treating everyone the same and giving access to the same opportunities? Mr. Gelder?
Well, thank you. You know, it's one of those things that I've actually thought about a fair amount lately. Just thinking about sort of the equity and just, so what privileges have I actually experienced in my lifetime as a white male in our communities? And I think that that's, it's definitely a conversation. We need to make sure that we do not continue to perpetuate systems or processes that maintain a certain level of implicit bias. To that end, actually, a couple of years ago, even before a lot of this came to head, the county shifted in our human resources, in our application process, went to a blind application, such that the reviewers of someone just don't know their name or even their gender. So that really you are starting off by understanding what qualifications and experience they have and how that fits, and that's actually increased our diversity a lot.
Thank you. Mr. Hinden?
Well, I believe in rules of common decency. And, you know, as a Christian, fundamentally, to me, it's wrong, it's sin for me to not treat people well, not to treat them with equal opportunity, equal kindness, equal fairness, and all of those things. In my business, and I think in the large majority of business, the large majority, we don't ask what color are you, what race? We want to know if you can do the job. And I've had a number Hispanic, I've had a Korean, I've had a number of people, even in my small business, and I was glad to hire them because I thought they could do a good job for me, and they were decent people. So I think it starts with our perceptions. I think we all have some biases from whatever I'd be, not telling the truth if I said I never did, but I try to correct those because I think they're wrong.
Thank you. The next question has to do with collaboration. How do you rate Kitsap County's collaboration with other counties and municipalities? Mr. Hinden?
Well, I think collaboration, partnerships, and all these are fine and wonderful and things that we should do, as long as they don't get in the way of us actually performing the work. I think sometimes I hear an awful lot of big words, but they don't lead to action, and I think that they should lead to action. It worries me that we can have King County or Pierce County dictating what we do. I know that regional planning is a good idea in theory. I'm not sure that Kitsap County gets a fair shake on that. But am I willing to work with people? Absolutely. And I don't care if it's another county, another legislative branch, even from a different party. If we can do things that are good for Kitsap County, I'm willing to do it, and I'm willing to put their name on it because it's the right thing to do.
Thank you. Mr. Gelder?
So in terms of collaboration with other counties and cities, I think we actually have a really good track record, and I've been fortunate to, I think, have a great working relationship with the cities in Kitsap County, but also in a regional basis. I mean, one, in terms of the Puget Sound Regional Council, I would agree with Mr. Hinden. There's times when it's really, you wonder whether or not Kitsap got a fair shake, but we've been able to have really great working relationships with Snohomish and Pierce Counties. And to that end, we also have many boards and services that we provide to the region. And to that end, we also have many boards and services that we provide to the region. And so we have a strong working relationship with Beaufort and Clalum as well, along with Kitsap. And of course, to Mason County, our neighbors to the south. But beyond that, I think relationships are really built through the Washington State Association of Counties. Because there collectively, all 39 counties come together with a common purpose as we take those issues to the legislature to make sure that they don't continue to pass unfunded mandates down to local jurisdictions to have to implement.
Thank you. The next question is about our county parks. Which county park is your favorite and why? What can be done to maintain and improve our county parks? And we'll start with Mr. Gelder.
Picking your favorite, that's like, you know, picking your favorite child. That's not fair, because you're going to tick somebody off. You know, it's really, really hard to pick because each one of them has their uniqueness that makes them a wonderful addition to our park system. And I've been fortunate in the past several years. It took seven years to basically create and implement and be successful with the Kitsap Forest and Bay campaign that brought in 4,000 acres into public open space. And part of that being a future ride park that Mr. Henden referred to. And the challenges with the ride park is not, I know we had some phenomenal volunteers that have made it all happen, but creating a ride center and moving that much dirt triggers things that just regular trailmaking does not. But I think any place that has a view, any place that allows me to get out and enjoy nature and enjoy the wonderful county is a great park for me.
Thank you. Mr. Henden?
Yeah, you know, I'm kind of a novice trail bike rider. Probably been in the Port Gamble Woods 20 times this year. Should have been 60, but you know how that goes. I get up some when I can. Great, great park and the efforts put into them. But I think that they are frustrated. You know, if we can't build some trails on 60 acres with almost no runoff, let's permit part of it. Let's move this thing forward. You have anxious people that want to get something done there, and the county just hasn't cooperated. I think one of them said it's one red tape thing after another. Hansville Boat Launch, I've been out there. Supposed to have a boat launch 24 years ago or something when it started. This summer, I was out there. I am not kidding, I bet 1,000 families drove through there while the gates locked. And there's two and a half acres of paved parking. All it has to do is open it. I understand the problems. I understand some neighbors don't like it. But it's another example of hurting our citizens and hurting tourists because we can't pull a lock off a gate.
Thank you. The last question, winning the election. What makes you a better candidate than your opponent? And we'll start with Mr. Henden.
Well, I've been in the county 57 years, and I think I have some ownership here. And in business 35 years. It'd be hard to argue that I know the budget or everything about going on there better. But I think what makes me the better the candidate is I'm passionate about this. I don't need this job. I don't need the retirement. But I want to see some of these problems that are ongoing, and I've gone on for a long time, begin to happen. And I'd much rather work with people, and I believe I'm a kind person. But at the same time, I'm willing to push on some of these things and say, let's get these things done. If we believe in the citizenship, we need to get them done. There's just no getting around that. Now, I'll have a learning curve. Every new business you go in, it's going to have, ABC means this. And I'm not going to know what ABC means, but we all have them in our industry. I think I'm smart enough. I think I'm smart enough to get in there and figure out what needs to be done. Work with people I can, and maybe push a little bit if I need to.
Thank you. Mr. Gelder?
And I appreciate all the qualities that Mr. Henden has as well. But I also bring to the job, as I mentioned earlier on, sort of, you know, the 20 years of executive management. But nine years of that being really in grassroots, in the county organization, understanding everything that makes it work. But not only that, but expanding the county voice to the, to state and federal issues, really. Because we don't function in isolation. One of the nuances that many people don't understand is that the county is a subdivision of the state. So many of the regulations and issues that we end up implementing that people think it's the county doing it, we're doing it because we do it on behalf of the state. We are required to. And that's a challenge. And when it doesn't work for our citizens and our communities, and it's our job to make sure that we advocate for them with our state legislators or beyond, wherever it takes us. So I bring that to this role.
Thank you. And now for the closing statements. Each of you will have a minute and a half, and we will start with Mr. Henden.
Well, thank you again tonight. I know this was a lot of effort on so many of your part, and I do appreciate your work for that. And for voting and the different things you promote as well. You know, we've talked about a lot of issues here. And I believe Commissioner Gelder is a decent fellow and a nice man and those kind of things. I just haven't seen in nine years, nine and a half years, really, of his being a commissioner, what's happened? I mean, with Kingston, it's been sidelined for nine years. The Navy Yard traffic there, what's the plan there? Traffic's going to come back. Hansville Boat Run, what's going on there? Why isn't this done? The Ride Park. And we can talk in all these high words about partnerships and collaborations and being chairs of this and that. You know, I just want to get stuff done. It's what I do in business. If I don't perform, if I don't get things done, I don't have any money. And it's very simple to say, okay, how do we solve problems? And they may be on a smaller scale. But it is all mine. When things go badly, it's on me. It means I pay for it. And that's a different kind of skin in the game, too, where it's really up to me to make things go, to work with people, to work with customers. Sometimes to fight with them, hopefully not too often. But here's what I want to do as county commissioner, get things done for the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gelder?
Well, thank you. And again, thank you to the League for hosting tonight's forum. I very much appreciate it. This is definitely part of the process to make sure that we have public engagement and public understanding so we make educated choices when we fill out our ballots. And I appreciate a lot of the concerns that Mr. Henden has brought up and what I hear from other folks as well. But I think there's, whether it's the Point No Point Boat Launch, which actually is not a county property. When it's the Kingston 104 going through there, when that's state infrastructure, we have to make sure that we can actually build relationships with folks to make them, make this a priority for them. If it weren't for the county and myself pushing on the Kingston issue, we wouldn't have received $2.1 million to actually get it started so that we don't continue to languish for another couple of decades. And so I do take that partnership and relationship building with a can-do attitude. I roll up my sleeves and get things done. And I ask for your vote to continue as your county commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, candidates. Voters, hopefully this forum has helped you choose a candidate. Ballots for the November 3rd general election will be mailed out starting October 14th. So keep an eye out for them. The League is encouraging voters to vote early and return their ballots as soon as possible, preferably to one of the Kitsap County's 23 ballot drop boxes. Their locations can be found on the Kitsap Auditor's website. If you choose to use the post office instead of an auditor's ballot drop box, please note that although a ballot returned by mail that is postmarked by November 3rd should be counted, the Kitsap County Auditor in our local US postal system are recommending ballots be placed in one of the post office's blue mail drop boxes by October 27th. The League's three forums this month will be recorded, and links to the videos will soon be on our website at l w v-kitsap.org. BCAT will also be broadcasting the recordings at a time to be determined. Please encourage others to view the forums and vote. Thank you for attending and good night.